That might be the best, the best thing.
Ready when you are, Mr. Chair.
Okay, one more time. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Lakewood Planning Commission meeting for April the 3rd, 2024. This time, would you please take role, Mr. Chair?
Sharon Wallace.
Present.
Ellen Talbot.
Present.
Philip Lindholm.
Present.
Mark Hare.
Present.
Lynn Larson. Philip Coens is absent, is here. Robert Estrada.
Present.
You have Corm.
Thank you.
Approval of our minutes from March 20th. You all had a chance to read it, sent to you via email. So moved. Mr. Larson moves to have the minutes approved. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's just a Mr. Lindholm with seconds. All approve with aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. A pose. Thank you. Do we have any updates to our agenda, Ms. Spear?
No, Mr. Chair.
Do we have public comments? We do. I'd like to open up this portion of our meeting to the public comments. I have three individuals here who, excuse me, two individuals here who would like to speak. I ask that if I call your name, do please come up, state your name and your city. And please, you have three minutes. First, we have Renee Buck. Hope that's correct. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Renee Buck. I actually am a resident of Dupont. I'm the current chair of the Chambers-Clover Creek Watershed Council, who you'll hear from later, so I wanted to thank this esteemed body for having us at this annual review and update of the shoreline restoration plan. And I wanted to thank the citizens in the audience for coming to listen and learn and see what's up. Thank you for taking us on.
Thank you, Ms. Buck. Ms. Vicki Stanish?
Hello, my name is Vicki Stanish. Thank you for, for allowing me to speak. And I just wanted to mention basically that going forward, since we're looking at the comprehensive plan for Lakewood, City of Lakewood, I'm hoping that you would take into consideration careful planning, maybe hire some, like, or start a board of, or committee of architectural people that, like, in a review board, somebody mentioned this the other day, the other night at the city council meeting, to help guide us with design, you know, even Mayor Whalen said it would be nice to have thoughtful design going forward. And I did give you handouts, each of you, about the Thornton Creek Water Quality Channel that was completed in 2009 up in the North Gate area. And there were three major impacts of that, of that project. One was an environmental impact. It increased open space within the North Gate urban center by about 50%. And, and that project reminded me of, kind of of our situation here, you know, it has a, there was a creek underneath, an impervious area, and they daylighted it, or they opened it up, and, and salmon came back, where, you know, salmon had disappeared for a while, and even the native grasses also reduced, it caused, or it resulted in a reduced impervious surfaces by 78%. And it was designed to remove an estimated 40 to 80% of total suspended solids from 91% of the average volume of annual stormwater from the 680-acre drainage basin. And then it also created new habitat within this paved commercial area. Within one month after opening, native birds came back and desirable native volunteer plants. The other impact it had was a social impact. It provided pedestrian links from adjacent commercial and residential neighborhoods and shortened walking access by 50%. And this was a car-dependent area, and it reduced the traffic. And also, it had an economic impact. It catalyzed $200 million in adjacent private residential and commercial development. So, you know, I hope people have the vision to, to see that this is, has a lot of potential in this, this town center particularly. And, you know, I hope that you are careful about designing it so that we attract develop, you know, retail and more people here, and affordable housing too, particularly, and, and protecting the watershed at the same time. So that all needs to be balanced. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Stanish. Those are the two individuals who have signed up for the public comment portion. But is there anyone else in our audience who would like to speak? Sir, please state your name and your city of residence.
Hello, everyone. Good, good evening to all of you. My name is Abraham Yujadili, resident of 9132 Edge Water Drive Southwest, which supposedly is condemned to be made a parking lot. Well, that property has a shoreline of 115 linear feet. And that area, actually, the water is stagnant, and I do have a witness here, Mr. Horn, who has been there where he has observed, and I believe he took a picture of it, that there is algae growth there because the water doesn't circulate, and it was a toxic algae, if I'm correct. Am I right or not, Mr. Horn? Yeah, and, and that's what it was. So also, the runoff from the street comes there. Really, expansion in that area, not because it's my home, is bad for the public. Because if you want to have the kids of this community go there, be my guest, but you are really exposing them to the toxics material from the road and also potentially a toxic algae, among other things. So really, this is not a place to expand it. If you really wanted to do something, you should be thinking about increasing the depth of the park, maybe vacating half of the Edge Water Drive on the western side of it and leave the other half as a parking for the boat launch. And the other half, you know, just make it a pedestrian, that people, they can access it. And, and leave it like that. They know that if we connect it, so the wildlife also could cross in that corner. And, and, you know, you have such a long shoreline there, of what you don't have is really a depth, and you can increase it. And there are not that many people who come there, maybe during summertime, a few weeks, they know, a few weekends. But other than that, the legislature just, you know, not long ago, a few months, maybe last year, yeah, passed the law that we don't have enough houses that our community could afford. And they bypassed the cities and legislature enacted laws because literally what it means, you guys are, are not doing your job in local, you know, locality. What this is, this is a slap to their face to destroy a home which is today, over 5,000 square feet of building offers you less than, or about a third of an acre, and people, we are living in it. Actually, that was a dump in 2008 when we bought it. The bank even that sold it us was not willing to finance it for us. And we bought it 441, and at that time, that was 16 years ago. And basically now, it's a custom-built luxury home. You are welcome to come and take a look at it. Think it's really a logical, a really thoughtful decision to do this? We had to make nearly 7911 calls to, for, for, because there had been intruders to our home. Basically vandalized our car, vandalized our fence, breached it, come in. They have stolen not one, but three of our boats, and one of them by accident I found it. Mr. Horn again has it at his home still. So they stole even our water hose. They have, they have tried to breach into our door, cut the window screen to, to come in. So you think this is going to get any better by what you are doing? Really? You think it's going to be better? We are gone. Some people, we sense that they don't like us. They think that by moving us, maybe this problem goes away, or maybe for other reason, because of the way I look like. And if, is that the way it should be, really? We didn't come to the city and say, well, you give us a grant, which other cities and states and federal government, among others, they offer, for somebody like us to rehabilitate this type of building? This is a slap to our face and to the face of so many people who have come here. Sure.
But thank you very much, and maybe Mr. Horn would like to say a few words also.
Sure. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. No, I wanted to give you something, because I haven't been here before. So you have a perspective. There's so many that have spoken against it, but nobody seemed like listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. As I indicated, we will accept any comment from anyone else who would like to speak, even though they're not, have not signed in. No? Okay, not hearing none. So, thank you very much.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. There are some people online. I don't know if they're wanting to speak or not.
Oh, please, check with them, please.
So if there's anyone that has signed in electronically to attend this evening and would like to testify during the public comment, please raise your hand. All right. Looks like no one's doing that. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Let me close this again. Thank you. We don't have any unfinished business, but we do have new business. The, as has been commented, the shoreline restoration activities update. Ms. Spear, who do we have online?
I believe, is, is Dr. Faust here this evening in person, or is he online? Is he? Okay. So this is just a really quick background, particularly for the new Planning Commission members. Every year, the city council has directed that the Planning Commission get a report from those that are active in Lakewood doing shoreline restoration activities in order to provide not only that update, but also if there are needs to perhaps amend the shoreline restoration plan that the city has adopted, or when the next shoreline master program update occurs, updates in that document as well. And so this evening, that's the presentation you'll be having here. And Dr. Faust, I believe, is the vice chair of the Chambers-Clover Creek Watershed Council. And I believe also that some of the people that are here online are members of the council and may be here for that purpose as well. So turning it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Faust.
Go ahead, sir.
Do you have my presentation?
I do. I'm trying to get it up right now. Just thought you might want to introduce yourself first of all. Give me a second.
Yes, my name is Dr. Derek Faust, and I am the vice chair of the Chambers-Clover Creek Watershed Council. And I see that we have it as a PDF. So the first several slides were sort of set up to roll through automatically in PowerPoint, but we can persevere, adapt, and overcome with this. And I'll just sort of give you a nod when you can.
Just let me know, please. Thank you.
So the City of Lakewood is a charter member of the Watershed Council, meaning that the City of Lakewood has the opportunity to, of course, participate in our meetings, provide a comment to the Watershed Council, and also present on things that they are doing within the watershed. The entire city is within the boundary, or is within the watershed itself. So then the entire City of Lakewood is within the Chambers-Clover Creek Watershed. And obviously Lakewood, lake is in the name of Lakewood. There is not only a lot of lakes, but a lot of other water bodies as well. And you can see those listed there. I, I don't think I need to read them off to you. And the other thing that we want to recognize is that the City of Lakewood has contributed $10,000 annually to our small grants program that is administered by the Watershed Council. We get applications. Volunteers from the Watershed Council evaluate those applications. And some of that work that is funded will be highlighted today. So we want to thank the city for that support. So these next several slides just show pictures of various water bodies within the city and highlight some of the issues that they have. So I'm just going to be quiet as we slowly scroll through these and just give like five to eight seconds for folks to read the text, what little text is we have there. But it's more about the pictures. Okay. So I already introduced myself. And I, although I am not here representing Clover Park Technical College, I am here representing the Watershed Council and also as a citizen of Lakewood. But I am an environmental sciences faculty at Clover Park Technical College, teaching both in our associates programs and our brand-new Bachelor's of Applied Science program. So a little bit about the Watershed Council for those that may not know about it. Our mission is to promote the protection enhancement and enhancement of the Chambers-Clover Creek Watershed. And this watershed not only includes chambers in Clover Creek, but also the various lakes that are in Lakewood. And it also extends down into Dupont with Superculture Creek and water bodies down that way. We provide an opportunity for local agencies and citizen groups to coordinate their efforts to benefit the watershed. We are a primarily water, or, yeah, volunteer-based organization, although we do have administrative support provided by Pierce County Surface Water Management staff. And our goals are to reduce environmental risks, encourage enforcement of environmental policies, promote environmental sustainability, improve fish habitat and water quality, and foster a sense of stewardship among watershed residents. So what I'd like to do over the next few slides is to highlight some of the major issues within the watershed. Now, these issues are the big ones that really affect habitat and fish and wildlife. That said, they are not the only issues that this watershed experiences. There are quite a few others. And I've been working for a little bit too long on a map to sort of highlight those things, but I've been busy with other tasks like creating a bachelor's program. So the first issue is water quality, and water quality is my area of expertise. And it's, water quality is very broad. You can talk about nutrient water quality. And when you have excess nutrients, that is what can cause some of the toxic algal blooms. And we saw in the slide where I was just silent that several of our lakes in Lakewood have, have experienced toxic algal blooms. And what, the one that's pictured here, Wahop Lake, it was reoccurring and so bad that the city took action, decided to do an alum treatment, and we'll, we'll learn a bit, or talk a little bit more about that a little bit later. We also know that we have the PFOS issue that not only is the city and other jurisdictions in the area along with JBL I'm dealing with, but also the Lakewood Water District who provides our water, right? So that's a pretty big issue, and one that hopefully y'all have heard of because it's been in the news since 2020 when they, I believe it was first identified, 6PPD quinone. So this is a compound that comes from tire, that is in car tires, and it is toxic to salmon. But there are a variety of other plumes that enter our stormwater, that come from cars, come from our roofs, sidewalks, et cetera, that can also be toxic or cause some sort of harm. So dealing with these compounds, nutrients, and toxic compounds in stormwater is something that certainly needs to be worked on. We don't really know, for instance, how to deal with 6PPD. We have some ideas, but the, the treatment, like, how do we treat stormwater to reduce that before it enters water bodies? Another major issue is water quantity. So you have water quality, which is what's in the water, and how can that impact the ecology? But without, if you don't have water itself, as we saw Clover Creek having a dry creek bed, and that the various lakes, they are connected to the groundwater. So I have another picture of Clover Creek being dry. But the other figure that's shown here shows the aquifers that are within Lakewood and the surrounding area. This watershed, unlike the other larger watersheds in the region like the Pialup and then Esquali, they are, their source water comes from Mount Rainier, the glaciers on Mount Rainier. Clover Creek and the other creeks in this watershed, along with the lakes, are connected to the groundwater. They are, the water is not coming from a glacier. It's groundwater-fed. So when we withdraw groundwater and then we don't reinfiltrate that water after it's used, that leads to groundwater depletion, and we end up with dry creeks, lakes that, lake levels that fluctuate perhaps more than what they should. So lower lake levels, particularly in summer, which can be a pretty vulnerable time of year, given that we really don't get much rain here in the summer anymore. So water quantity is a really important issue, particularly in this watershed because of the connection with our surface waters to the groundwater. So a little bit more on the water quantity. Lakewood Water District provides water not only for all the citizens of Lakewood, which is about just over 63,000 people, but it also serves the town of Stellcom, which is another, almost 7,000 people. In addition to that, they have water rights, enough water rights, that they can supplement other water systems outside of the city. So you see the Summit Water and Water Supply Company, another 15,000 people, Spanaway, 30,000, Fergrove, 30,000, Washington Water Service, South Sound Water System, 40,000 people. I did not know that they had two customers in the City of Tacoma, which I found interesting. But, and this is all information that was provided by Lakewood Water District itself. And there are also 866 customers between, in the unincorporated area of Pierce County, between Lakewood and Stellcom. They also have wholesale customers. And it's pretty difficult for them to know how many people are being served by those wholesale customers because those wholesale customers also have their own wells that are pulling out of groundwater. So it's really hard to tell. So the Water District does track how much water they provide to their wholesale customers. But they don't know those wholesale customers' overall total usage within the watershed or within the water system. But they are providing about 5 million gallons per day to their wholesale customers that lie to the east of the Water District. So as I mentioned, if you don't have water, it's sort of hard for things to live where they typically live in water, like fish. So dry creek beds have led to fish kills, like fish literally just dying in a dry creek. You see it occasionally in lakes. We also have lakes that are struggling, and the one that I want to highlight is Wahop Lake. So every year, the Tahoma Bird Alliance does a Christmas bird count. And some of that data is shown in these two figures. So the figure on the left is the waterfowl. And you can see labeled for the years when the alum treatments occurred. And again, the alum treatments were to, the, the purpose of the alum treatment was to sort of, yeah, sequester is a good word, bind to the phosphorus in the lake water and in the lake sediment and drop it down to the bottom and sort of lock it up so that algae cannot use it, right? Because the issue was these toxic algal blooms. And alum does do that, but alum is aluminum sulfate. And then there's also some other things that are added when you do these alum treatments. So you end up with aluminum and sulfates, and that sulfate can turn into hydrogen sulfide. Hydrogen sulfide can be toxic to aquatic vegetation. So in the lake, what we've ended up with is a water body that has a lot less submerged aquatic vegetation than what it used to be, than what used to be there. And that has led to trickle-down effects. You don't see very many waterfowl. You can see the alum treatment that happened in 2020. Since then, zero waterfowl have been observed during this bird count. Pretty stark. For non-waterfowl, after, there does seem to be some, some recovery. But as the bullet point says, in 2023, the counts observed more birds flying over the lake compared to in the lake itself. So the alum treatment seemed to, seems to have changed the ecology of the lake in such a way that waterfowl in particular are not really interested in using it like they had before. So what can, what can we do about this? What are the restoration needs within the watershed? Well, for the groundwater, or for the water quantity issue, we can better manage our groundwater withdrawals along with the recharge. The withdrawals are sort of hard to manage because water rights exist. And, you know, people tend not to want to not use their water rights because, well, they have them, right? So that's a little bit harder to manage. It could be managed. But the recharge, I think that's where we could really make a big difference. Currently, we all are drinking water, water that we use to shower for our toilets. Where does that all go? Well, it goes to the Pierce County Wish Water Treatment Plant. Once it's treated, where is it discharged? Puget Sound. So we withdrew groundwater from within our watershed, beneath our feet. And instead of putting it back into the groundwater, we put in the Puget Sound. So how can we figure? We put in the Puget Sound. So how can we figure out a way to change that? Um, from the water quantity. One thing that we can do or quality, water quality, better managing our stormwater. Uh, although I will highlight, if you better manage your stormwater, one uh a lot of the practices, best management practices. For better managing your stormwater. Involve trying to infiltrate that stormwater back into the groundwater. So it could help with the water quantity issue as well. Um, we of course want to protect water bodies, uh for example, wetlands. Uh, last well. Don't know if it was last week or two weeks ago, uh the US Fish and Wildlife Service came out with. A report that they do about every ten years, looking at wetlands. And how wetlands have decreased and from two thousand nine to two thousand nineteen, I believe it was. We have continued to lose wetlands in this country and that. Lakewood and Washington is not immune from that. Um. But there are other water bodies, of course, our creeks and whatnot that have been impacted as well. So. We need to have, we can have development, but let's have it in a smart. Uh, fashion that we reduce the impacts on on these water bodies.
Excuse me, Dr. Faust. Uh, is that okay? Commissioners have questions they ask, or would you prefer to wait till the end?
I'm flexible.
Okay, in case you are interested. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Um. Another thing, uh promoting Lakewood shoreline health. So um shoreline includes along our lakes and uh streams. We. Lakewood does not have any shoreline along Puget Sound. Um, but all these uh our our creeks do dis- uh flow to Puget Sound. Chambers Creek does um enter Puget Sound along with the tributaries that contribute to it to it. Um, for the seasonal flow that's observed in Clover Creek. Um, right now, we there's only a temporary connection to the groundwater. Uh, so we really need to monitor groundwater levels to better understand. Uh, what's going on and so that we can improve flow in the creek so that we don't have the creek going dry for six plus months out of the year. Uh, much of the creek and lakeside property within the watershed is privately owned. So that requires some effective outreach. Um, because. The city can only do so much uh with the what it with the uh. Shoreline property that it owns and manages. But when it's privately owned, the impact that you have is through regulation, possible regulation, but also outreach. And letting people know how they can uh treat. Uh, these water bodies in a in a kind fashion, if you will. So what is the Watershed Council doing? Uh, we have um. Folks that keep an eye on water flow along with shoreline health in the various. Um, water bodies to include Clover Creek, Pont St. Leon Creek, Flat Creek and Lake Stelcom. This is done through taking photos. Um, collecting uh data on on birds and bird counts, along with collecting water quality data. Uh, for the community, we're supporting local organizations and programs. Um, again, through our small grants program. So a few examples. Uh, there is a wildlife sanctuary project on Phillips Road um from the Clover Park Rotary. I'll talk just a little bit about uh wet uh flat wetland restoration that I spearhead. On Clover Park Technical College's outdoor lab property. Uh, the Pearson family has done restoration on their property. And the Gary Oak um Coalition worked with uh property owners, in particular, a church. Uh, to the. East? Yeah, I guess it would be east of I five directly, but it's right next to I five. And they removed invasive species and planted native right along uh native trees and shrubs right along Clover Creek. Um, for climate change and resilience, we actively participate in this activity, um uh the shoreline. Um, tree planting restoration along with uh coming and presenting here. And we also have of many of our members that participated in Pierce County or Pierce Conservation District's. Habitat stewardship training and um several of us run Habitat stewardship events. And with our small grants program. One that has consistently been supported has been the Clover Park School District Salmon in the Classroom Program. Where uh which allows them to purchase the equipment and bring salmon eggs into the classroom, hatch them. Um, and then eventually they get to release the salmon fry into Chambers Creek. Um, and this is with the support from WDFW's School Cooperative Program because they provide the eggs. And the permit that's required to release the salmon back into the creek. And as I mentioned, our small grants program has supported this. Particular uh program in the classroom, salmon in the classroom multiple times over the years. So uh to highlight. Um, the work that's happening in Flat Wetland and at Clover Park Technical College's Outdoor Lab Facility. Um, so we have one hundred and fifteen acres. Eighty acres of that is flat wetland. We also have over hu- seven hundred mature dairy oak trees. Um, so we're very fortunate to have this as a resource to teach students. Um. But it 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 is the site of the former Flat Dairy, so there's invasive species and other things going on. So it needs a little bit of work. Um, so next slide, please. So um last March, no, when I add. At some point over the last year, I received a grant, almost nineteen thousand dollars with. An equivalent match. Mat- of matching funds from the Washington Department of Natural Resources Community and Urban Forestry uh program to support this work. We've uh over the past two or three years now, we've restored more than ten thousand square feet of habitat. That includes seven thousand square feet uh um next to the wetland and three thousand square feet in the Gary Oaks. We've pl- planted, at this point, it has to be over one hundred native trees and shrubs, along with doing seeding. Uh, educated, it's more than twenty students. Um, quite a few students in restoration techniques, along with community members, because once a month, we we hold. Volunteer Habitat stewardship events and we have community members come and join us for those. Um, so over two years of doing those community stewardship events, we have easily six hundred hours of volunteer time. I mentioned the uh Pearson family, uh they own property uh that is adjacent to Flat Creek. And over three years, they have restored approximately ten acres. Um, in the riparian area, the the area next to Flat Creek on their property off of Bridgeport Way. Um, this includes a steep ravine that was covered with ivy, English ivy and other non-native invasive species. Uh, they created a walkway to get down to the creek, uh removed invasives. And they planted native species like sword ferns and other native shrubs and plants. And what uh everything that they did. Uh, followed effective riparian practices that a- and restoration practices that are promoted by. Uh, the Watershed Council itself and Pierce Conservation District. So Clover Creek, I've mentioned several times, it's dry six plus months out of the year, I believe. Uh, this is information from last year's presentation. I've um. I was on vacation the past couple of weeks, which is why I'm a little tan. I spent some time in the Caribbean, so I didn't have time to touch base. With our resident expert on flow, uh Chris Kaufman, who is here. Um, but suffice it to say that um the situation has not improved in Clover Creek. Uh, we still have a lot uh no water in the creek for um a substantial part of the year. Um. It does flow in the the rainy season. Um, but it's all has to do with that connection to the groundwater. And precipitation has most certainly been below normal for the past few years. And uh March, this the la- March, this past one, like just last week. Uh. Was drier than normal as well, and April right now is not looking much better. Um, so until we get the aquifer levels high enough. To provide flow to the creek. Um. It's going to be what's called a losing reach. The creek. When it flows, some of that water will actually go into the groundwater. Instead of the groundwater controping flow to the creek. And when that happens, the creek can go dry, particularly when it's not raining. So increased demand for water certainly impacts um. Levels uh in flows and creeks, along with lake levels as well. So uh last year when we did this presentation, uh we had some recommendations. Uh, so you have con- the city has continued to support our small grants program, and again, we thank you for that. The impact that that uh small grants program has is quite, uh I I think quite extensive. Um, consults with the Water District in Pierce County to use the USGS model that you uh. On steps that could be taken to improve creek flow. That hasn't happened yet, and that's in part because the model and the report associated with that model is still being. Uh finalized, but hope we're hoping that uh the city will reach out to the USGS. And work with them to use that USGS model to um better understand what's going on in the watershed. Continue this annual review and update if needed the the restoration plan. Um, that's happening. Yep, here we are or here uh and. For the update portion, is an update to the plan needed or is it more? Uh. Better follow the current plan as it as it is currently exists. And then the other recommendation we had last year is to support staff attendance at the Watershed Council meetings. We do have um city of Lakewood staff that do occasionally attend, but it would be great to see them a little bit more consistently. Um, so that we can receive updates from them for what's going on within the city and what's coming up that could impact the watershed and its water bodies. So what are our additional recommendations to add on? So. Um. The main thing uh is to follow the shoreline restoration plan. Uh, and the component, which is a component of the shoreline master program. Um, the Watershed Council contributed to the formulation of this plan. And it provides a lot of goals and policies related to shoreline and other natural features. Um, and when we approach restoration for restoration policies, within the plan itself. There are system-wide policies and goals. There are goals that are specific to the Shoreline Management Act, uh which is an act from the state, and then they also reference. Um, actions and goals that are present in the Watershed Council's action plan. Um, so the latest update was in two thousand nineteen. Um, there were targets for reducing shoreline armoring. Educating homeowners about runoff, um including pesticides and fertilizers. The value of native plants, particularly in restoration. Um, managing things like water quality and aquatic vegetation. Um, there wasn't mention of management of lakes except for Wahop Lake, uh which I, as I mentioned, received that alum treatment. Um, and then American and um Lake Louise. Um, what's going on those lakes? It's primarily homeowner-driven because they have groups that represent those lakes on behalf of the citizens. Or not on behalf of the citizens, it's the citizens that represent themselves and the lake through their groups. So. Some additional recommendations. Better manage stormwater. Um, this can include retrofits to one uh to stormwater drains that discharge directly the water bodies. To better treat that stormwater before it reaches the water body. And something called green stormwater infrastructure, which is a set of best management practices. Um, that the goal of uh green stormwater management is basically to. Um. Mimic the natural hydrology a little bit better. So doing things like infiltrating water into the uh back into the groundwater and stuff like that. Um, the Growth Management Act requires a protection of critical functions and values of water bodies. So better managing stormwater would fall under that. Um, using best available science when we're managing groundwater. Um, should always be a goal, right? Um, science should be a guiding principle in a lot of decisions and policies. Conservation and protection measures to preserve or enhance salmonid and or uh and other anadromous fish. We all know how important salmon are in this region. Um, and but I hope that we've all know as well that salmon are not doing so well. And particularly not in this watershed. I've heard stories of how many salmon. You could see in in uh Chambers and Clover Creek. And you just don't, that it's. You you rarely see salmon anymore. Um, I've observed very few salmon in this watershed, unfortunately. Um, we also recommend that you collaborate with the the Conservation District on restor- shoreline restoration management and education. They have a great program, um and. Uh, they recently mentioned to us, to the Watershed Council that. Um, a lot of work happens in the city of Pialup and they mentioned that the reason that they can do that work is because. The city of Pialup provides funding for that. So the city would have to include some funding to to do some of that work with PCD. Um, you have a lot of citizens that have been trained by the Conservation District. In areas of water quality, habitat stewardship. And um uh other areas of restoration, and these citizens are willing to help. Um, so engaging with the public to do some of this work can be very powerful. And then um education and outreach, this is something that's a bit of a struggle for the Watershed Council. Um, because again, we're volunteers and we really don't have a funding mechanism per se ourselves. So sending out pamphlets to people to try to educate them is not something that's easily done for us, but. Um, this uh city Lakewood, along with other jurisdiction within the watershed, could help with that. Um, the water, we recognize that the watershed does not exist in isolation. Yes, city of Lakewood is fully within the the watershed. But there are other municipalities, of course, that that are present, Pierce County, City of Tacoma, City of Dupont, right? Um, so working with those other jurisdictions to address these problems is going to be critical. Because Clover Creek. It's not like it goes dry in Lakewood. It goes dry before uh it reaches Lakewood. Um, and a successful model of this collaboration. Sort of exists with the um Chambers Creek Trail System that was a work between city of Lakewood. University Place and Pierce County. Um, and uh pictured there is Mr. Al Schmouter. Um, he has worked for years to get Chambers Dam removed and it's in the works. You know, it's going to be a long process. There's a lot of things that need to happen. But um it would be great to see the city engaging with that project as well. Um. Include the the Watershed Council in plans for Edgewater Park renovation plans. Um, and align that with the shoreline management plan itself. And then finally promote water conservation. So um that might include working with the Lakewood Water District. To um analyze their their pumping statistics. And see if there's air ways that we can encourage water conservation. Um, and I also, it's not, I don't have it listed up there, but with working with other jurisdictions. Again, that recharge of groundwater is really important. So uh working with uh um Pierce County and um the sewage treatment facilities. To bring some of that water back into the watershed instead of just discharging it to the sound. Almost done. Probably like, shut up already. Hopefully not. Um, so in conclusion, Lakewood is growing. Um, we recognize that the state uh um government often dictates the rate of growth. Um, and a gentleman earlier mentioned uh that. Uh, the state last year passed as part of the Growth Management Act. Um. That and sort of dictated how cities have to grow and the type of housing that has to be provided. Um, but if we use best management practices as that development happens. Um, that can really um sort of get ahead of some of the issues that can arise. From increased stormwater that comes with increased per- impervious surfaces with that development. Community, connecting with the community is so important because they. Have to grasp the connection between groundwater recharge. Withdrawals and the repercussions on that on surface water flows. When we extract water from streams or from the groundwater. That affects the streams in the lakes. When we extract water from streams, that can affect the groundwater, again, particularly in this watershed. Surface water pollution can lead to deterioration. Not only of the surface water itself, but because it's connected to groundwater can affect groundwater quality as well. And vice versa, when groundwater becomes polluted because of that connection, it can affect the surface waters. And personally, and I, on behalf of the Watershed Council, but me in particular, not anti-development. My dad, who was pictured there with a salmon that he caught in September, this past September, when he was out here visiting. He is a plumbing, heating, air conditioning, water pumps, water conditioners, water heaters, you name it. He's in the construction business, but he's also a very avid outdoorsman. Spends a lot of time hunting, probably when he retires will spend more time fishing. And. He certainly. Would want to. See things be better, I think, right? So I think together we can do better. The group of volunteers, some of which I talked about here, we can only do so much, right? We're volunteers, we can't make regulations, we can't enforce regulations. So it takes the leadership of you and the city council to help us. Do better on behalf of our water bodies. And for our future generations that can hopefully see those water bodies be restored. And with that, I'd like to thank you again for listening. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
We thank you, Dr. Faust, for your presentation, and I ask the commissioners questions, Mr. Larson.
The last three years has seen Clover Creek go dry more and more each year. And you attributed that to less rainfall. I wonder if in the wintertime, you can recharge the. Water table by poking some holes in the bottom of Clover Creek. Such that some of the water goes actually down into the. Water table and with us with Chambers Creek and maybe even the lakes to. Keep some of that water from flowing away by flowing across it. Do you have any thoughts on that?
Well, so there is of course less rainfall, but I don't think that's the only issue. The groundwater withdrawals, I think. Almost certainly have to have a role.
So has the groundwater. Removal happened more in the last three years than it has in previous time?
I don't, I don't think in the last three years. So more recently, yes, I think the rainfall has had a bigger impact. But I do know that Clover Creek sort of experiencing dry creek bed has been an issue for quite some time and. Chris and Don here could probably speak to that better than I. I've only lived here since 2018, so. I've not been a direct witness to some of these things for as long as they have. But in terms of, so there are portions of Clover Creek. I think it's outside of city limits that are paved. And some members of the Watershed Council have. Been saying for years, depave the creek, which would help with infiltrating water when it does exist, right, in the rainy season. But I don't know that just infiltrating more water in the rainy season is enough at this point. Like I said, we're basically exporting our, the water that we pump out for various uses, right? And then it's going to Puget Sound, and that's not how the natural hydrologic cycle would work, right? Normally that would be recharging and infiltrating back in.
I'm just referring to the last three years where it's gotten longer and more than it had in the previous 20. Which is the time I've lived on Clover Creek, so I'm a witness to that. And seems to me that there might be some little things that can be done, but you can't make it rain.
No, 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 no. Certainly we cannot make it rain.
This is climate influenced and as hard as we want to try with. Doing something with the resources that you've already described, which I applaud. It might be that we just might ask to rain more, all we need to change our perspectives on it. And so thank you very much for your presentation. I learned a lot tonight.
How much of the groundwater that is, or where's the groundwater coming from? Which per aquifer that is getting distributed and how much of that is actually going to be able to go back into the same water table? Because they, you know, the pool that you pull from isn't always the same.
Yeah, so we have, and hopefully Don will correct me if I get this wrong. We have the A, C, and E aquifers. And I believe most of the water districts wells are in the 300 feet foot range. Is that the sea aquifer? Mainly sea aquifer. Cam told me that they're drilling now down to 500 feet, which is going to reach into that E aquifer. Now, the in-between, so they're labeled A. The aquifers are A, C, and E, but in-between you have what are called confining layers that don't allow. Water to move between those aquifers, but there are gaps in those confining layers. So water can move between those different aquifer levels, the A, C, and E. At least in certain portions, yes. Thank you for pulling this back up. So recharge certainly will help. I'm not a groundwater expert, so I don't want to overreach. With how will it help where we're pulling the water from. I would probably defer to Don. I know he knows a lot about it and Chris as well. Because they've been around longer and they've looked at this issue a lot more. In addition, that USGS model. Can, could provide some insight into that as well. Good questions.
Okay, I want to vary. I see we have Trish on virtual who raised her hand. Let's go to her first, please.
Can you guys hear me?
Trish, can you hear me?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Hold on. Problem on my end.
Oh, okay. Can you hear me?
Not able to hear Trish.
Can you hear me? Ah, shoot.
But it looks like it's a former planning commission member.
It's, is it Trish or is the former planning commissioner?
Well, that's the picture of one of our former planning commissioners, so I'm assuming that it is him.
Okay, well, we'll come back to him then.
Thank you.
Ms. Wallace, please.
Yeah, hello, thank you. I've been kind of looking at this issue for a long time and been reading about what other cities have done. And there are some general comments I would love to hear about. Is there any move towards looking at adopting some of those best practices? For example, permeable sidewalks to allow that are ADA compliant to allow return of groundwater. Of using the stormwater, different plans of management for recycling that stormwater. For example, what you see that's done on ships is quite common, particularly naval vessels, for example, so it would be. Nice to have some of that. There are better ways to use it. We could still supply our customers. But there are ways to return that groundwater to the ground that we, as citizens can even do, but we need a plan. So is there any movement to do that and create some sort of some general good advice for this particular area of how we could better manage our assets?
So to my knowledge. I don't believe the city has, is, I've not heard of the city doing anything like to do those things and use those management practices. Or at least require the use of them. That said, the Conservation District certainly encourages and works with private landowners to do things like rain barrels. Rain gardens. And. They have a program where they remove impervious surfaces like sidewalks and parking lots and whatnot. But I'm not sure that the city is explicitly doing anything. But I don't want to speak for the city. I've not heard of anything, but I could be wrong as well. And in terms of the Watershed Council, we certainly encourage these types of practices. But again, as a volunteer group, that we're not regulatory, right? And nor is the Conservation District a regulatory agency, so. That sort of the power to, not control, but to encourage that type of thing. Doesn't lie with the Watershed Council or the Conservation District. It would be its municipalities that really. And or the state that would have to drive that, right? It would have to come from the government level, the regulatory agencies. But we certainly encourage it and I do it. So lead by example, right? I have rain barrels at my house. I looked at doing a rain garden, but it wasn't really good fit for my property. But all my, the rainwater that comes off of my roof either goes into rain barrels or it's infiltrated. So. But I do think that some of these practices could be, could be used. The permeable surfaces, permeable pavements and sidewalks and stuff like that, those are a little bit. That takes a more engineering, let's say. For sure. But to my knowledge. I don't know what the city is doing on that front.
No, I was just asking for your education level. I saw one of my neighbors put in a permeable driveway. Beautiful job, a lot of work. And so I wondered though, if you had some recommendations that you might be interested in sharing and maybe putting it up on a website or something so that citizens could use it, but also would be informative for all of us.
Sure. We can, we can look into that as a Watershed Council to provide that information. Yeah. The information is out there. I know Washington State University Extension, they actually have a whole thing on green storm. Well, I think they call it low-impact development. So green stormwater infrastructure is also called low-impact development historically. The terminology seems to have shifted, but it's the same thing, same idea.
For the information.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we now have Trish available. Go ahead.
Is it Trish or?
Hey, can you guys hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so I just had to add a couple of questions about the sort of the groundwater being sold. Or, you know, sold off to other sources. Is there any way or do we know if there's any way to limit that? Or is that sort of out of the citizens' control?
I'm sorry, ma'am, this is not a time for back and forth with the commission, the.
Sorry, totally, totally fine. Yeah, sorry. So I guess my main comment, and I agree with Dr. Faust. Is that I'm not anti-development and I don't think a lot of our neighbors are anti-development, but I'm totally, I think that. It's really important to consider the smart development and where we're allowing developers to build property. And to make sure that we're considering the environmental impact, especially over creeks and near water sources. Because I do think that will directly affect the future of, you know, Lakewood City is if we continue to sort of keep building up. But not doing it in a smart, in a smart way. So that was a totally a great point and I just want to reiterate that. So. That's my main comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Trish. Thank you very much.
Dr. Faust, thank you for your comments here this evening. You mentioned. The returning of treated water currently is. I don't want to use the word dumped, but returned to the sound directly. Is there any benchmark program throughout the country that you're aware of or any programs that you're aware of that. Might reintroduce that water back into our local waterways in an effective manner? That you can share with us right now?
So I do know that in other areas. If water, drinking water is sometimes pulled from like local rivers. And then the wastewater treatment plants are discharging back into that same river. And the Watershed Council.
Can you name one?
Yes, the Skoko River in Pennsylvania, for sure. I don't, I don't want to say locally because again, I'm not from this region, so I'm still learning things from my esteemed colleagues in the audience. But yes, and then another one that the Watershed Council heard of. Was using constructed wetlands, taking treated stormwater and then further treating it using these constructed wetlands. And then discharging into the river and that, that was in Texas and I forget the exact name of the river. But it was in Texas and the Watershed Council heard a presentation from, from a consultant that had worked on that project. So. I'm not saying it's, it is by no means an easy lift, right? Because the way the infrastructure currently exists. Unless we put in wastewater treatment plants that would just discharge back into the creek itself. Or, oh, wait, I'm sorry, there is one locally. Lot mitigation down in. Lacy Olympia. Yeah, Lacy Olympia, Lot stands for Lacy Olympia. There we go, Tenino Town Water. And yes, they are taking. Treated water and they have infiltration ponds and wetlands. With the goal of infiltrating back into groundwater.
So please forgive my ignorance, but if we took that, the output of the treated water. And we moved it upstream into and reintroduced it somewhere along the waterway. Is it that to me conceptually sounds fairly simple? I'm sure it's more complicated than that. But if we reintroduce that water top side into the waterway, is that something that would be effective in what we're discussing here? Or would that not be effective?
So what's happening at Lot is a little bit different. Instead of reintroducing it back directly into the waterway and just contributing surface flow. Again, the goal would be to allow that water to infiltrate, to recharge the groundwater. So basically you create recharge ponds. And you have to do this carefully because it has to be in an area that would allow that water to move down into the groundwater, down into the aquifers. So you have to look at the geology of the area and make sure that that can happen. You can't just put these recharge ponds anywhere you want, right? So while discharging back in the stream would contribute more consistent flow. Our thought is doing the recharge for groundwater. Might be more effective given the groundwater connection. And part of that is. Salmon need cold water, right? So if the water goes back into the groundwater, it has a chance to cool off. Groundwater, if you've ever been in a cave, right? A cave is pretty consistent temperature. So underground is pretty consistent temperature, particularly deeper. Below the frost line. Although we don't get a whole lot of frost here. So that would, by recharging groundwater, cools the water off. And when it discharges and back into the stream and into the lakes. Now it's a colder temperature and that's exactly what salmon need is cold water temperatures.
Thank you.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions or comments? Okay, please, Ms. Talbot.
I'd just like to make one comment, and that is that I definitely appreciate this presentation and. The information in it. It definitely heightened my awareness about our. The way that groundwater is captured and returned. It also heightened my awareness and about, you know, as. Council and the city is trying to grapple with the, with accommodating for housing and. Goals for infilling the town center. I do, this presentation heightens my awareness about particularly the new pervious surface that would be introduced to. To the downtown center that's associated with new development coming in and planned for. And so it does make me just. I think it could be productive in some ways for council to consider perhaps. Taking a position on its policy. taking a position on its policies on filtration and biofiltration on site from this new plan development that is coming in or plan to at least. Because many folks in this room may remember that there used to be a lake just right back behind the Target. And so I don't know how. I mean, the town center is largely paved today, but constantly on Creek is just right across the street. And so everything that comes in in now and into the future has impacts. And so my only comment is just that, you know, it may be productive for council to consider some some policies that that take a stance on how new development is required to filtrate onsite.
Thank you, Ms. Talbot. Sir, thank you very, very much. You have enlightened us quite a bit. And you and your your staff, as such, your fellow, I appreciate very, very much. And I think you did bring many things to light, and I think you not only educated us, but also our community. I appreciate very, very much.
Yeah, thank you again for the opportunity. And as an educator, I'm glad to hear that I helped enlighten y'all a little bit and and hopefully the members of the audience as well. And this is not just my effort. I'm presented, but a lot of the knowledge comes from some of the people that are sitting in this room. Because I only have six years here, so. Others have quite a few years and have witnessed the changes over the years. So thank you again.
Thank you again, Dr. Faust. Appreciate it. You have one more item under new business, Miss Spear?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So I will be presenting myself now on a brief update for you, if I can find it. Hopefully this will help. One second, please. All right, so this is coming back to your favorite topic in mind, which is the comprehensive plan periodic review, which is going on as we speak. This discussion this evening, though, touches on transportation in particular. And it's just a quick, high-level walkthrough of an audit that was conducted on behalf of the city over the last six months or so regarding transportation levels and where there is increased transportation since the last 10-year review that occurred, as well as what's now being projected for various parts of the city and what the state legislative changes to housing densification in our single-family areas might turn into in terms of transportation patterns. So this was done, as I mentioned, over the last six months or so. There were three basic purposes, which was first of all, to estimate transportation conditions in 2024, looking at the 2044, excuse me, incorporating the growth targets both for jobs and for housing that are happening this year. Look and see whether further travel demand analysis is needed, given those changes in growth targets. And if so, what are the options that the city might take to make sure it is planning adequately for the levels of service that it might have and want on various types of streets, at intersections? And if some changes to levels of services, the most drastic option might be called for or not. And the intention here also is to make sure that as the city proceeds with its 24 update and accompanying development regulations and other changes as well, that the plan itself and its transportation analysis will comply with what's required by the Puget Sound Regional Council. If you recall, that's the regional agency or body that says yes or no and certifies the transportation portion of the 24 plan. If they say no, the city is not eligible for the funding for transportation projects that funnel from the federal government through PSRC. If they do certify and say go forth and conquer, then those funds would be available for successful projects from the city of Lakewood. And then the last part of that was to make sure that the transportation element would be consistent with all of the other things that are being updated this year. So again, touching back on housing with the changes that we've all talked about now a couple of times, that the housing element, for instance, and the transportation element are both considering the same current status as well as future projections. This was a high-level first step, so this is not the final conclusion that you will be seeing come in May. But just provides a little bit of good background for you as we move forward into the larger package. So comparing when that last transportation report was done, if you look at 2014's numbers, you'll see there were about 24,000 households and 26,000 jobs. And the estimate at the time was by 2030, there would be about 32,000 households and 33,5 jobs. We had a little middle step here where the downtown and the station district subarea plans were adopted. So that 2035 projection date is from the two subarea plans. And there it was an update to by 2035, households would be at about 34,4, jobs would be at about 39. Now we have the new state influence, I'll put it that way, and county adopted growth targets for both households and employment. Households, it's at about 36,375. And the employment target for 2044 is 39,375 jobs. So I'll just go back up here quickly to the household. This is not the housing unit numbers, but the number of households. It's also not therefore the population of the lake of the city. It is people in homes, et cetera. So the math, if you were to try to correlate this to population or housing units, it's a different number again from those other two. So the key findings out of the audit was that, first of all, there is growth increased from that old 2030 target to 2044. And that's about 14% in household number total and 18% in jobs. But most of, I shouldn't say most, much of this, and we've talked about this before as well, is now identified for the downtown, particularly jobs, and then housing in both downtown and station district. Higher densification happening by intent and by plan in those two subareas than the rest of the city. What this does in terms of transportation analysis is if most of this new growth or much of it is going into these two spots, other parts of the city won't have as much demand over time on those very local roads, right? So it's going to be a not across the board increase in demand on streets. But one other thing that you see is because there is this densification happening but under theory, at least right now, for downtown and station district, is there may be less people in cars and more people using active transportation options, i.e. walk, bike, et cetera, and public transit in those smaller footprints where they might be able to work and live nearby. The second big finding was that, in fact, even before COVID, there was a decline in the local city-street traffic volumes. And I don't know why they didn't really go into that. Why? I don't know that anyone could really explain it. But the decline was that this did, sorry, the decline started before COVID. And then when we were in the middle of the pandemic, obviously, when people were home because they needed or had to be, that is was a bigger dip. Things have come back since, but it has continued to be decreasing from the level, say, in 2015 to today. The third finding is that local roads, again, have experienced a decrease in traffic, but the regional traffic is a relatively stable trajectory. So if you were to look at 512 or I-5 compared to what's happening in the local roads in the city. Travelers is one thought here from the consultants. They might be opting for walking, biking, carpooling, or public transit versus single occupancy vehicles. Or maybe people are simply working remotely as a result of telecommuting opportunities that went up with COVID as well. So again, when we talk specifically about transportation and the projections there, what this high-level analysis showed was that because the local traffic is going down and because where the city is concentrating job and housing growth in these subareas instead of citywide, the forecasts on traffic volumes that were made way back in 2014 are actually might be higher than what's actually going to happen going forward because of all these changes in in patterns and and what's gone on with traffic volumes. So all of that to say, the analysis done in 2014 might actually hold for the city longer than anticipated. It might still be worth keeping those numbers as projections for a longer period of time. So the the summary, the conclusions, the increase in overall vehicle miles that are estimated between 2030 and 2044 is about 10%, but that's being mitigated by about a 5% drop in the local streets between 2016 and 2022. So it's kind of the city's growing. There's more jobs here as well as people, but the traffic volumes have gone down. As a result, the transportation volume projections are going to be valid longer than than people thought. So a little bit of a surprise, actually. Okay. But if that's the case, what are the next steps? What does the city need to do to make sure that it complies with the requirements at the Puget Sound Regional Council for transportation funding? As well as consistency between all of the different planning elements in our comprehensive plan? Three options were provided to the city. First of all, just recognize that change, that basically with the 10% projected increase less the 5% actual reductions, maybe we're okay with our analysis and leave it alone. The middle step is to just look at an analysis between now and 2044 for the downtown and the station district, where much of the growth is being targeted, particularly for jobs. And then the third option is a full-blown update of the entire transportation needs analysis across the city. Where do we sit today? April 3, 2024? The city is considering whether to pursue the selected analysis or the full update, not before you get through your 24 plan review, but maybe over the next few years. And we've actually submitted a grant to the federal government that if successful, would fund a full citywide transportation analysis. So we would hear back on that grant application, I believe, by the end of June of this year. And this is just a final little note. The map for if you did that middle road, that selected analysis, basically, the fatter the red here is the more traffic volume is projected on that particular stretch of road. So if you were to compare where my cursor is right here across the lake versus right here, which is in the middle of the downtown, way more traffic volume increase here than there is over here. And so the middle option would be to take a look again at where these areas of anticipated higher levels of growth would occur rather than citywide, and then citywide is exactly that. So we're not quite sure where we'll end up. This is a question not only for community development, but public works. And we'll just keep you up to up to date as we hear on that grant first and foremost. And that is it, Mr. Chair.
Questions? Questions?
Mr. Coe?
I don't have a question. I have a comment to make after.
Regarding the.
Not regarding, not regarding this, but regarding the previous. I said general comment, but I don't want to make it during the presentation.
Okay, well, let's just wait till our our next step. We do have comments. I appreciate it. Regarding this, Mr. Larson?
It seems to me that we don't need to do unnecessary work. So if there's a component that is benign in its effect, that why go take valuable staff time to study that? The other part of it is the part that does have the dynamics of transportation in it is the downtown area here that I wonder if there's a balance that we need to think about from a transportation generation standpoint, that's also a jobs and economic perspective. And that is that if we take the land that's available for business and jobs growth and and convert it to residential growth, then we may be creating some incompatibilities and some pressures on one transportation factor or another. And that's rather nebulous, I realize, but it's something I think that we need to take into consideration.
Thank you. Ms. Talbot?
I wanted to ask first, what is the, may I ask, what is the grant award, what is the grant amount?
I wasn't the one who drafted it this year, Commissioner. I believe it's about 150,000.
And the reason I asked was because my thought was that even if you, if the city is unsuccessful and being selected, I would I would encourage council and staff to just budget and perform the full analysis regardless. And I was I was gonna add, I would advocate for doing the full analysis for a few reasons. I do understand the point that my fellow commissioners making about, you know, not wanting to rehash, fully understand. But I think it's important to understand what you, what what the city needs to get out of a out of a full in-depth analysis. The results so far show kind of not conflicting things, but things that don't, data that doesn't tell us enough. The volumes between 2016 and 2020 during that five-year period, sure, they might have seen declines. And overall, traffic volumes may have stayed flat over a 10-year period or so. But it does, the the report does also go into detail a little bit about the vehicle miles traveled that have increased between existing conditions and the baseline conditions. And to me, that says that, well, even if traffic volumes have stayed flat over time, that means that existing vehicles in the city are making more trips more often. And those trips have impacts on intersection operations and turn movements. And this, the turn, yeah, turn movements and determining whether or not. So I guess that's another reason for doing a full analysis, because that would tell you the severity of delays and congestion at various intersections at the city where where maybe does intersection geometry needs to be reconfigured or looked at? And also, or or signal timing operations need to be looked at as well. And so those are the things that a full in-depth analysis gets you the ability to analyze. The other thing I wanted to mention too is that in the policies, thank you for providing the policy matrix in the back. I don't know if we'll have a chance to talk about this again in a future discussion. So that's why I wanted to just make the comment here now. But in the policies, I did note that that there are, that you've, that there have been proposed edits to address the way in which LOS thresholds are established and establishing them for the city. And I think that that is important to for the for council and staff to have established LOS thresholds. Because it 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 influences the way in which the signal timing works at intersections and controls flow. But also, it establishes a level of service for mitigation that would need to be, I think, directed at development and new development when it comes. Particularly, I wanted to mention too that in January of 2023, the state legislature passed a Senate bill called Senate Bill 5452. And this this bill authorized cities to direct impact fee revenue to fund improvements for bike and ped, for bike and ped projects. And that's huge. That's that's actually hugely advantageous for Washington cities. Because prior that, prior to that, cities couldn't use impact fees collected from transportation mitigation. They only had to use it for roadway type of improvements. And so being able to use it now for bike and ped improvements allows, you know, gives the city some leeway to direct and make improvements on those non-motorized active transportation modes that you that would be difficult or challenging to pay for without revenues like that. So I I have thrown a lot out there. But for those reasons, that's why I would advocate for doing a full-blown analysis.
Thank you.
Good points. Thank you. Any other commissioner comment? Miss Spears, anything else on that particular subject?
Well, just to follow up, I'll just, if you don't mind, Mr. Cheryl, tie my next steps comments that I usually do. Well, just to follow up, I'll just, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, I'll tie my next steps comments that I usually do at the very end. Next time you will have members of the staff from the Public Works Department here to talk about the six year transportation improvement program. And there's so, part of what you're talking about right now, feel free to share with them. They'll be able to provide you better answers first and foremost than I can. But also, for instance, talking about the impact fee options right now, as I believe you're all aware, the city does not have impact fees. The way transportation is funded is through CIPA mitigation analysis project by project rather than knowing ahead of time and everybody paying the same amount, at least in one particular part of the city or citywide. The only area where there is a preset amount that someone can predict is here in the downtown with that transportation mitigation fee we talked about. That's been collected at about 175,000 out of the 1.6 million that could have been collected because of administrative policy that was set. So again, all of that will be in front of you next meeting. So you'll be able to continue this conversation.
Thank you. Follow on with our next steps. We would have a report from our liaison, but he is not here this evening.
No, he's not.
It's also a chance for us to make comments regarding, as you indicated, Mr. Coleman, if you want to make a comment.
I, I just thought I didn't want to interrupt Dr. Faust. He did a great job presenting and I think the information in there is good. I you know, he's, he's an educator and one of the things that he does well is kind of shine light on things that you don't see every day. You know, and I, I enjoyed you know, council member or Commissioner Talbot's comments on the roads because she works on that stuff all the time. She's very familiar with it and that it kind of helps bring some things to light that maybe people aren't familiar with. I am a big fan of being a good steward. And so I should preface that I'm not an advocate, but I, I really like the responsible development. I really like all of the ideas on how we can do better. What we had today, I think, is more of a, a light to shine in a closet. And so we see a little bit of what the skeletons are, so to speak. There's still a lot of data, though, a lot of information we need in order to make educated decisions on what and why and all those. There's a lot of cause and effect, the charge and recharge, where it's coming from, where it's going. Even the sewer, you know, putting it back in and, and I love those ideas. I'm in fact, I'm always advocating, let's come up with those. But let's, let's look at how it, how it works and where it's worked and why and what kind of contamination can come from it. I got lots more questions and I have answers. But I think it's all stuff to explore. The, the, the one thing that kind of jumped out at me is this Northgate one. And I, I happen to have a little familiarity with this and this one, I don't know that I would, I don't know that I would consider this one a win. And the reason why is because the, the waterway there isn't a natural waterway. It's recirculated water. To give the, the illustration or example that there's water moving through there that's naturally from it, but it's not necessarily all it's treated. And so there is, sometimes there's these things that look really good and tell a story. And then there's other things that are really good and then have great, you know, side effects that come with it. And this one, I, if you know the history, there's, there is litigation related to this. A lot of money went into this, that that money in my mind could have been better spent building a bigger park. Building better, cleaner facilities. What they did end up with was better than nothing. But it was a compromise and it was not a great, it wasn't a great outcome in my mind. So when I look at these, I look at what do we, what can we do to help incentivize developers or people to do go above and beyond? And stormwater is something that you have to take care of anyways. Mandating a bio swale, it's going to be a big, big ask and a hard thing to do. And I don't think that's something the city of Lakewood should be involved with. But I applaud it. I've done it on projects and I highly encourage it. So what can we do to help incentivize really good behaviors that will, you know, put water back in, keep it clean and, and do it? I, I think that's something we, we really should explore. And I, I think that there's a little cause and effect on some of these. And the last thing I'd want to do is just say, hey, I really love this. But you know, the, the water going down and drying out has been a pattern going on for a long time. And that's when you know, there's a history. We've had a lot of these presentations over the years and that's come up many times. This is not a recent thing. I don't even think those pictures were recent. Those are from pre, previous, pre presentations. And so I do like the content and I do like the message. I also, I want more information. So as we go and look forward to trying making good policy or recommending good policy for the council to approve, that we get all that information so we can really have that impact we want. If we really want that water in there, then what kind of water is it? Is it sewer water or is it real, real water that can go back in and healthily recharge? Do we want it to flow all the way through? And what's the cost for that? And, and what are the ramifications of all those different things? Where is that water source coming from now? And there's a lot of data we didn't go into. But there's more to the story and there are answers to all those. And there are consultants that can actually help with all that and, and answer all the questions that he was talking about. And, and I'd be glad to refer him on. The, I think problem is it's very expensive to do all this stuff. And this has been something that, I mean, we've struggled with. We want to do more, but we have limited funds. So I, I think it's something that if I walked away with anything, it's we need to keep, you know, supporting the program to the degree we can. And maybe there's a way to find some more funds to do a better study or help supplement the information that they're bringing in so that we can gather more information for looking down the road. So that's, that's my little speech.
Thank you for your little speech. Ms. Wallace?
I just wanted to give you one feedback on that. As of concern as it might be, when we did not have sewers, the lake behind me was a lake every winter and it really does work to recharge the water table. And it would fill up and we had frogs and snake, you know, little garter snakes and all of those things. When we got sewers, it dried out and it's been dried ever since. So we're punishing the water table. Clearly is an issue now. What, what exactly we want to use, what kind of water to replenish it is another matter, but it does work. And it clearly is affecting our streams and lakes and it, if you put all that sewage back in there, it, all the stuff will come back. But I'm not sure that that's exactly what we want to drink.
It's different between a septic system and pumping millions of gallons of, of treated chemical. And so, so it's just a matter of getting enough information. So we we, we go in eyes wide open. I don't know that I would want millions of gallons of treated stuff to be going into the water table right now. Maybe in a few years after we see some more data. I would love that, but I, I don't want my kids drinking that stuff and, and animals drinking that stuff.
To be continued.
To be continued. Lots more, but, but good light on it.
Miss Spear?
And just in reaction to that, what I came away with this evening is there's an obvious need and desire from the commission to hear more about this. And so I would be happy to try to bring together some other voices to come back for another conversation about the way the stormwater is handled in the city, the way sewer and septic is handled in the city and kind of flesh out a little bit more what you heard tonight. If that would make sense.
So we thank the presenters, Dr. Faust yourself and the commissioners for their querying questions and comments. I thank you all for coming for this evening. At the city council meeting, many of you were there. A comment was, we didn't know that this was before, when we spoke about the RTAs, this was before the planning commission. We would have been there. So I asked, could you please let us all know, what is the notification process for when we have a public hearing?
Well, first of all, it's mandated through state law to follow a certain process at a minimum, which is to publish something in, in paper. But the city also publishes all of their upcoming agendas online on its own website. And we also provide, as soon as it's available, the materials for each meeting on the website as well. I believe that our communications department also provides a weekly broadcast email, if you will, that people can sign up for where every council meeting is discussed each week, what's coming up or what just happened. Facebook and Instagram and LinkedIn are also used by the city to advertise its meetings. I do not know if there were any actual physical mailings put out about the RTA expansion proposal. On occasion, mailings will be made for things as well in front of council or commission. For instance, the comprehensive plan ones we've done in recent months. But as far as I'm aware, it was the legally required minimum of, it's on the website, it's published in the paper. And then beyond that, there was essentially electronic communications, social media, et cetera.
I believe the comment from one young lady was, I don't do social media. Therefore, I need paper. She wanted a postcard. And you said this, we do that, but on a limited basis.
Yeah, at this point, we don't have a policy that says every time there's a public hearing, that would be cost prohibitive. Quite frankly, we're talking 60,000 households, let alone the businesses. But at this point, if the council wanted to do so, it could develop some sort of, this is our public notice process we're going to use.
So we encourage y'all, please, tell your friends, family, social media or other means, please. And we'd love to have you here. Anything else, Miss Spear?
No, that's it, Mr. Chair.
Our meeting closed.